So this is the standing meeting of the planning board of the town of Wenham for Thursday, July 14th, 2022. Happy Bastille Day to all of those of you who may have French heritage. Or otherwise feel allegiance. We are on Zoom tonight. We continue to be on Zoom. I have not heard anything about any intention to take these meetings off Zoom and back in person. As of this point in time, I know that there is a rolling calendar on this at the state level, and I haven't heard anything about changing that at the local level. On the Zoom meeting tonight, I myself and Weeks, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, David Anderson, who is a member, Peter Clay, who is a member, Rick Woodland, who is a member, our staff, Margaret Huffman, and our Recording Secretary Catherine Tinsley. There are a number of members of the public here tonight, I'm sure, for the continued public hearing. This meeting was noticed in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 1825, and the agenda was posted, so anyone who has business here is welcome, of course. There is considerable interest in the first item on the agenda and including then that's the continued public hearing on the Audubon Cherry Street parking lot, including, we I guess have new plans from the applicant, even since the board got its initial agenda packet. And an email, another email, a letter from a Butters. I know the Open Space and Recreation Committee intended to discuss this at its meeting last night, which ended up being canceled. And there is a letter of support circulating there, which hasn't been acted on. Here's how I guess I would like to handle this, because there is so much interest. I guess I would like to have a brief staff presentation about developments since we last were here. Possibly a sharing of screen and showing us what's going on in the parking lot. Application at this point. I'd love to run through the questions that have been posed, both from the towns engineer to the applicant, and also to the extent that they're not duplicative, from the neighbors to the applicant. And then I can describe the Open Space and Recreation Committee letter, which has, again, not been voted on, but I can give you some background on that, being a committee member. And then here, I guess, from members of the board and the public on, you know, deliberating on what we are doing here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Margaret Huffman for a quick overview and a discussion with the applicant.
Great, thank you, Anne. Just, the board is aware, we got a revised set of plans, an engineered plan from them, and I sent some comments about, you know, different issues that I saw. They responded with a revised plan. So I can bring that up, and I know that one of their engineers is here tonight, I think, to discuss it into the presentation. This has been a long time since we really since we opened this hearing and really had any discussion on it. So everything that you're seeing tonight is pretty new.
I would also say I forgot to introduce Liz Stetson. I think she's here from Mass Audubon as well.
Yep. Liz, and Liz, I can ask if you, who's going to present? I don't know if it's you or Charlie. And let me know if you want me to bring the plan up on the screen.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think I'll start off, and then Charlie will say a few words about the site plan and the work that Hancock has done. If you could pull up the plan, that would be great. And I'll just introduce myself. My name's Liz Stetson. I'm the Director of Capital Assets and Planning for Mass Audubon. I'm also joined by Amy Widen-Saul, who's the Senior Regional Director for Mass Audubon on our coastal region, including Ipswich River and Cedar Pond. And Richard Wallnowitz, the Regional Property Manager from Mass Audubon, is also here from our team. So the proposed project is to add a small 12-car parking area at our Cedar Pond Wildlife Sanctuary and some additional signage. And before I, you know, I'll kind of walk through some of the things that have changed since we last shared this plan, but I just wanted to start with kind of putting this project in a little bit of context of Mass Audubon and our organizational kind of goals and mission. We protect and steward over 40,000 acres across the Commonwealth. We have 60 sanctuaries that are open to the public. Many of them are unstaffed in the same way that Cedar Pond would be, and we take our, you know, our relationship with the towns in which we work very seriously, and we're really committed to ensuring that all of those properties are managed in a way that's positive for the neighbors and for the communities. And that is certainly what we we plan to do here. Right now Cedar Pond has a network of trails that's really not accessible or usable by the public. And part of our mission is to provide opportunities for people to connect with outdoors and to foster connections with the natural world. And an important way that that happens is through our network of trails. So, you know, we feel strongly that to have this network of trails not be accessible or available for use, really, because of the current lack of parking. You know, we feel we're really not living up to that mission in the best way that we can. So that's really, you know, what we're trying to do here. We just want to make this trail network available for the public through this addition of a small parking area and some signage. So since we last presented this plan in March, we've had a number of sessions that were open to the public and with neighbors, and those were hosted primarily by Amy to gather input and feedback. And those, I think, were really productive conversations, and we heard a lot of good input through those sessions, and we have made a number of changes based on the feedback that we received. Probably most significantly, we were originally proposing a 17-car parking lot, and we've now reduced that number to 12. We had also initially shown 10-by-20-foot parking spaces, and we've requested a waiver for 9-by-18. So the combination of the reduced number of sizes and reduced size of the parking spaces equates to an overall reduction of 1,400 square feet of parking area. So we've really, you know, made an effort to reduce the total size and minimize, you know, any visual impacts or other impact that the parking area might have on the property. And that was in, you know, direct response to some of the feedback we received. The 12-space size of the lot is really similar to the kinds of scale of parking that we would provide at other similar sanctuaries. We hope to be able to offer, you know, occasional morning bird walks at Cedar Pond, and those typically would have, you know, 12 to 15 participants plus a few staff members. So we feel that this is an appropriate size to be able to accommodate that kind of programming. We have also changed, we've requested a waiver to to surface the parking area with crushed stone rather than asphalt. And that was again through communications with the neighbors and an effort to kind of minimize the visual impact of the parking area and use, you know, more natural materials wherever possible. We still have one accessible space. And then this plan, which I think was maybe not clear on our previous plan, shows the proposed signage, which would include an orientation panel we can see on kind of the right side of the drive in this drawing. And that's our standard signage that you would find at nearly all of our sanctuaries that includes a trail map. You know, tips for safe trail use and all of our kind of rules and regulations about how the property is managed. And those kind of, that type of information is really critical to managing a safe sanctuary, and that's not something that we currently have on the property. So that's an addition we'd like to put in place. There's also a small driveway entrance sign, which would identify the property and allow people to clearly see where the entrance and exit is. We've also added a split rail fence along the right side of the driveway. There, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but see the line on the plan, hopefully. And that is to prevent or deter any vehicles from parking on the grass and to really keep any vehicular traffic contained within the proposed parking area. We're also showing a proposed gate, which was part of the original plan that's just past the parking area, and that would really remain closed the majority of the time. We would open it, you know, on the occasional times that we had a need to, but that would really be closed most of the time. The gate at the entrance of the property would remain in place, but we don't currently have any plans to keep that closed, but it would give us the option to close it if we ever needed to at a future point. We have also added some vegetative screening along Cherry Street. There is already, you know, a fair amount of vegetation there, so this would be kind of supplementing what's existing. But, you know, the idea there would be to reduce any visual impact that the parking lot might have as you drive down Cherry Street. I think those are all the kind of changes or additions since we last presented this plan.
Liz, would you take a question now, or would you like them at the end from?
I can take a question now, sure.
On the vegetative screening, can you describe what that would be? Is it, just what that, what is that? And then the other question is, is the proposed driveway entrance sign in the right of way? And have you spoken to DPW about that?
Sure. On the vegetative screening, Rhododendron is exactly right. We've been talking about native evergreen shrubs, so Rhododendron or Mountain Laurel or something along those lines. We have not spoken to DPW yet about the proposed signage.
Thanks.
It's probably worth, excuse me, Charlie Ware with Hancock, just to, I think is relevant. The sign is shown outside the right of way.
Thank you. It's a little difficult to see on a screen.
So I think with that, I might turn it over to Charlie to talk about the site planning and stormwater management.
Sure. Again, my name is Charlie Ware. I'm with Hancock Associates. As a civil engineer on the project, I am the civil engineer on the project. One of the things about the design that we've done is, and you can see, we located all the major trees on this, on the lot. You'll see, you know, 36-inch, 36-inch, 20-inch, you can see that at the at the top side of the, and then at the bottom, again, a lot of large trees, a lot of large calipers. And what we did is we fit the parking lot into, where there's a, it's really a hayfield right now. And we fitted into that area so that we don't, we don't, none of those trees being removed. In fact, there's no trees being removed at all. When I first saw this project, I thought that we would, we checked what's called the, I'll get to the hydrology on this. We checked what's called the NSCS mapping, which lets you know what's on site for the soils. And I saw that NSCS was saying that there were sand and gravels on the site. So I immediately thought that, okay, well, we'll go out and we'll do a soil test and determine, you know, where we could likely do an infiltration system, so the stormwater will infiltrate into the ground. And once we did that soil test, which confirmed that that was the findings, those soils are what we found. And we completed the lot survey and the topography. And once I was on the site, I saw that there was, you know, there was already a low spot, that the site itself, where the parking lot is and the area around it, is really spoon-shaped. It's all, you know, if you can imagine, it's a spoon-shaped lot. And the stormwater that falls in that area runs, you know, oval. And number one, there's not a lot of stormwater that will come off of the site, because it is what it is, you know, vegetated. And it runs down into a low area. Now, in this plan, it's called naturally occurring infiltration area. And that's literally what it is. You know, in a very large storm, I've done some, you know, some calculations that show that there was, it would just, even in a 100-year event, there would just be a few inches of water in there, because the runoff runs into the ground so quickly with the with the sandy soils that we have on site. So by introducing the, you know, crushed stone parking lot, there certainly is a, you know, a slight increase in the volume that would get there. But the volume that of, that exists within that naturally occurring infiltration area doesn't make any, you know, any significant difference to the to the elevation of the stormwater. It's only a few inches now, and even in the larger storm, there's no evidence at all of of any ponding that occurs down in that area, which is, which tells me that this, the stormwater is running into the ground very quickly. So once we install this crushed stone area, it's not going to make a change on that naturally occurring infiltration area. The water will still will infiltrate into the ground at that location. And so that my conclusion on this is that, you know, this is all contained on the site. Whatever falls from the sky hits the surface of the ground, it's going to either be taken up in the vegetation or is going to, most of it, probably over 95% of it, will literally run into the groundwater. So that's really an unchanged condition. That's what's going to happen. That's what happens today. And after this parking lot is in, that's what will occur in the future. So there'll be no impacts to any, you know, there's no runoff coming off the site. So there'll be no impacts to any of the Butters or any other property that the, you know, any other locations on this site that the Audubon owns. That's really my presentation. It's pretty simple.
Thank you very much for that. Margaret, did you have questions from our engineer that have been that are still unresolved, or?
No, I don't have any unresolved issues, especially the stormwater piece. The only thing I do not remember was the sign. We will need to have the details of that sign, so the planning board can approve it. I didn't see it on the detail sheet.
As a separate matter? Is that what you're saying, Margaret, or as part of the special permit?
I think it can be part of a site plan or approval.
But we do not have that tonight, is I guess the point.
Yeah, we won't have that tonight. The special permit, again, is just for the reduction in the size of the parking spaces and the change of the concrete, from concrete to the crushed stone.
Would you like to talk about that, so the board members are all up to date about what the finding is there, that the need for special permit?
Me, Anne, you want me to talk about it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the, this project is before you for site plan review. Parking areas are allowed as long as they conform to the regulations of the parking area. So your regulations require 10-by-20 parking spaces. They're asking for a reduction in the size of the spaces. And it also requires bituminous or concrete surface, and they're asking to do crushed stone. So, I mean, if they came in with a parking lot that conformed in all ways, this would just be site plan review and not a special permit.
So tonight, we're voting, if we get that far, on the special permit for this with the two waiver requests.
Yeah, and I guess it depends on what the sign is, how big it is, or, you know, if I had those details, we could determine whether there's any need for special permits for the sign.
I wonder, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Liz.
Well, I was just gonna say, I do have, you know, I have some details and images of the signs I'm happy to share now, if that would be helpful, or we can provide that information at a later date, whatever.
You can, it's up to Anne, however.
You can certainly show it now. I think we're going to have to think through what we're going to require you to do based on the size and have to look back at the ordinance and/or the the rules and regs and see if another, you know, if we can fold it into this, or if we need another permit. And I don't think any of us have done that for tonight, but if you wanted to show what it would look like, I'm sure no one would have checked.
And there was one other thing, and that's the stonewall, that this is a scenic road, so I didn't realize that they were proposing to do any relocation of the stonewall. I think we'll have to look into that.
I was wondering about, the only modification we're proposing is in the section that runs parallel to the driveway, which is in pretty serious need of repair currently. So we're not proposing any modifications to the section that runs along Cherry Street. Just wanted to clarify.
And is what you're proposing a repair or taking it out, or?
It would be repairing it and then relocating it slightly to accommodate a little bit of a wider drive.
See your notes, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we may have to have a public hearing specific to that. Just because of the way the state lost work on scenic roads and these stone walls.
Does it, if I could, Madam Chairman, is it, that portion of this wall is outside the public way? It's on, it's on property. I don't know if that matters or not.
I don't either. I think I'd have to look at the the law, and I haven't prepared to do that tonight, and I haven't asked counsel about it either. I can see that Mr. Woodland has his hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just, my partner does a lot of research on properties. He's actually written two self-published books on the properties in West Wenham. And one thing he did report to me, which is footnoted, if we had to get into it, that wall is probably from the, part of it at least, is from the 18th century. It was noted in some detail, and the conveyance, I think it was Mr. Moulton's will in 1802. So there is some history to that wall that we do want to be sensitive to. I don't know what that entails technically, but it has been documented as being 18th century. Some, we don't know exactly what piece.
Thanks. That's really interesting and helpful. Do other board members have thoughts, questions about this at this point? For the applicant or Margaret? I'm hearing none.
I do.
I'm sorry, David, I looked for a hand and see it.
No, I did it without doing it the right way. So three.
I do that all the time, sorry.
You know, three questions. Number one, what is the effect for snow removal with the crushed stone? Is that an issue? Or what's the plan to get it through more than one winter? I just don't know. I'm from California. I don't know how this works. Number two, I don't see any bike racks. Was any thought given to bike racks as an option? Or am I missing something? That's always an option. Actually, that's the only two questions I have. Thank you.
Liz, do you want me to talk about the snow, or do you want to handle that? Yeah, the, you know, the decision I actually recommended, at least to fill our project manager on this, I had recommended staying with the pavement. The crushed stone is highly maintenance-intensive. In the wintertime, it will plow off to the sides and you know, Audubon is just, is going to have to, in the springtime, rake that back into place and and, you know, do whatever, you know, annual repairs need to be done. It just, it is what it is, and it's going to take maintenance to maintain it. They certainly work well most of the year. And one of the things about crushed stone is it does plow off.
And I will say that, you know, we do have a number of other, you know, many of our properties have crushed stone or gravel parking areas, and so we're quite familiar with the maintenance that's involved. And certainly asphalt is a little easier in that regard, but, you know, this is part of our effort to kind of to work with some of the requests we receive from neighbors. So that's why we're proposing the crushed stone.
Can you also answer the question about bike racks? Is that an option?
Bike racks, yes, sorry. We are not currently showing bike racks, but that's something we can add. I mean, many, many of our properties do have bike racks, and that would probably be a good addition here in particular.
So, thank you. So just on that, is it fair to say that the site plan, as up on the screen, could accommodate bike racks? Like, it's not, as though there's no space for it?
Oh, sure.
If it's appropriate, I guess I will mention that, as a member of the Open Space and Recreation Commission for the town, we have an open space master plan that has been out since, oh, I don't know, 2018, that calls for improved access to natural areas in town, including this one. So the board, as I mentioned when I opened the meeting, was meant to meet last night and discuss a letter of support. It has not been voted on yet, but this kind of parking and signage and improved access that is gentle and sensitive, and not, you know, not taking out a lot of trees, providing a lot of screening, being careful about drainage, is the kind of increased improved access we, I think, had in mind when we were drafting the plan and putting together recommendations. So I don't want to say what the board would do when it votes on July 20th, but there will be consideration by the Open Space and Recreation Commission in Wenham of that letter on, at our July 20th meeting. And Margaret, have we received anything else from town departments about this?
No, no one has any concerns. The police chief, police chief did send you something. I think you saw that. We did have discussion, and he just wanted to let them know that he wouldn't have the staff to lock it up or, you know, make sure it was locked every night or anything, something that he wouldn't be able to do.
Margaret, he, Chief Napoli, in his letter to you, said he thought the place was going to be well-lit, but we actually don't have lights.
Right, yeah. And he did send another email confirming that he knows there's no lighting.
With that, we did also get a letter with some questions from neighbors. I don't know if we want to walk through that.
Do you want me to bring it up on the screen, Anne?
How does the board feel about that? Have you had a chance to review it? Or, Rick, you have your hand up. You're on mute, Rick.
I just wanted to make sure that if there were questions that pertains to what we're voting on, right? So that we're just voting on parking spaces, maybe a wall. So if there are those concerns in those letters, I think there were, that we could address those or bring those up. But the others, really, I think, for other groups that we wouldn't benefit from opining on, right?
But I am not sure we're going to be voting tonight either with the questions about the sign and the wall outstanding. So if, I mean, we can definitely run through any non-redundant and relevant questions that have come in, and this is a public hearing. And this is a public hearing. It's open. It's not closed. So any member of the public, of course, is welcome to offer a statement. We'd ask you to be somewhat brief. We're not going to vote tonight, I don't think, on this, just because we still have some issues outstanding. But, you know, if there are questions that remain and the applicant's here to answer them, maybe we should try to do that.
I think that's a good idea, Anne.
Yep, good idea.
Do you want me to bring that document up on the screen?
Sure, and we can tick through and see what's on there that we haven't already talked about and that maybe we need answers to.
This is the one we received on July 11.
Great, thank you so much. So I think it's the idea of putting the parking lot near the road is probably because that's where the flat area is. But I would ask the applicant to opine. I'm particularly impressed by the fact that you have listened to the neighbors to such an extent at this point and that you're attempting to preserve large species trees and reduce runoff. And trying to make this as, you know, sort of reflective of the natural environment and, and, and in a sense, almost hidden in it as you can. So I wonder if we can just tick through these questions and if there's any.
Yeah, and I wonder, could we, I think it would probably be helpful just to identify who the letter came from.
Okay, but I, I would ask you to do that. I can't see it on screen.
Yes, I will. Sure. So it, it was in an email sent to me on Wednesday, July 13th. I was copied on an email. It was sent erroneously to the select board members and then I forwarded it to the planning board. So for Catherine's purposes, this is a letter that, an email that was sent to us from Barbara Burke. And it was signed by, or she indicated it was from the, a group calling themselves the Wenham Citizens for the Preservation of Environmental and Community Safety. Joanne Bronson, Barbara A. Burke, Robert J. Stork, Mary Callahan, Dennis Callahan, Barbara Clayton, George Shanopoulos, Abigail Croyle, Marty Croyle, Hilly Ebling, Patricia Fleming, Richard Fleming, Cheryl Hines, Patrick Hines, Barrett Crotch and Julia Crotch. I received another email today from Barbara with the addresses of all of the people on this list.
Thank you so much. And I can see that some members of the public who signed the letter are on the meeting tonight. So I appreciate your attendance. So can we just tick through this sort of quickly and maybe get some answers so that everyone is aware of what those answers are? And first question is, why does the proposed parking lot need to be located near the road? Was there consideration of diagonal parking along the existing road? And how was the number of spots determined? How will the new parking area be advertised? I think it's pretty clear there will be some signs. What plans are in place to confine parking, prevent people from parking along the road? Will violators be towed? How will the gate be utilized? I wonder if the applicant could just answer the questions about the function of the parking lot. I think your presentation did a pretty good job of that, but there might be some questions left in here that that weren't answered. So if you can respond to those, I would be grateful.
All right, thank you. So why does a parking lot need to be located near the road? And actually, I can sort of answer the first two questions. We did explore many options for the parking lot location with our property staff and other staff who have similar properties. And we decided to, that the proposed location was, was the best option in part because it increases, you know, our ability to manage and monitor the parking lot from the road. You know, it does give us some improved visibility to have that parking lot closer to the road rather than at the back of the open area. And ecologically, you know, that concentrates kind of the disturbance of the site to the road. Well, you know, maintaining the wood edge and the rest of the property as open space rather than kind of disrupting that open space with a parking lot further towards the back of the property. I did talk a little bit about how the 12 number spot was determined. And that was in part based on our experience at similar sanctuaries. And also, you know, the typical size of our, you know, bird walks or small programs that we might want to do and being able to accommodate parking for those. In terms of how the parking area will be advertised, there will be the signage that we've mentioned. And as with all of our properties, we have pretty detailed information online. So that when a visitor arrives, they know exactly what to expect. And that includes things like indicating that there is limited parking, that the property is only open from dawn to dusk, that, you know, trash is pack in, pack out, all of kind of the rules and regulations of our properties.
This is, this is, excuse me, this is a no dog property, isn't it?
No dogs, yep.
And that will be signed as well?
That will be signed as well as on the, on the website. So all of those, those details will, will be made clear on our website. And then the property will be identified with signage as well. In terms of confining the parking to the designated parking area, we mentioned the addition of the split rail fence along the open side of the drive as well as the gate just past the parking area. So that should really, you know, it will prevent cars from, from accessing parts of the property beyond that parking area. In terms of the gate, the gate just beyond the parking area will be closed the majority of the time. The gate that's right at the driveway will be current, you know, will remain as it is, which is, is open currently. And we've had, you know, very few if any issues with that policy thus far. But leaving the gate in place gives us the option of closing it at a future date if it's determined that that's needed. I would just ask Amy Wyden-Sahl, who's also on the call, and it's the Senior Regional Director, would want to add anything to, to any of those questions, responses?
Nope, you covered it all. Thanks, Liz.
Okay.
Now, we're going down to safety. I think we've answered a lot of these questions, perhaps with the police letter and previous conversation. It sounds like there will not be security cameras, that the monitoring of the parking lot will be pretty much as it is today, right? Because there's a driveway today that people can go in and out of. And the entrance marked, sounds like pretty clearly you've answered that question. It does sound like you're going to restrict parking to daylight and there will not be lights in the parking lot. I'm not sure there's any more to say about that. Is that right?
That's all correct, yep.
So going down to neighborhood impact, the vegetative screening we have discussed. I don't know if you have anything to say about whether a hazardous situation might be created if you're entering or exiting the lot because of the screening. Are there plans to screen the Bronson property, which is on the left, is it? If I'm looking at the, or the right, if I'm looking at the flat plan? Which, which side is?
At the plan, I believe that's the to the left.
To the left, if I'm looking direct. So what is that west? Are there plans for screening there as well or a fence? Who will enforce the rules for parking and use of the property? I mean, as it is now, you don't have anyone monitoring that lot, correct?
So I would say that, you know, we have property staff who drive by daily. So we are, we do monitor the lot currently. We continue to do so.
Sounds great. And what happens now, I think, is if there's parking going on there and times when it's not typical or permitted, I'm sure the police take care to make sure that all the properties in town are monitored. But you're not going to post anyone there at night. Is that correct?
That's correct.
May I make a comment? This is Amy Wyden-Sahl with.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So just a couple additional comments around that. So we met with the chief of police to discuss locations of the parking lot and to get their input. It was the chief and another police officer. And we had discussions about, you know, use at night and concerns that they had. They were, you know, very supportive of the location that we chose. And the people driving past is going to reduce the amount of potential incidents that occur in that, in that parking area. We do have staff. I mean, this site is, is within five miles of Ipswich River Wildlife Sanctuary, where we have a lot of staff based and we have a lot of activity that go, a lot of staff that, that travel both on their own personal commute, but also between our two, our two properties, Endicott in the town of Wenham and, and then Ipswich River in Topsfield. We drive by Cedar Pond on a, on a daily basis. So we do have staff monitoring the site and, and will continue as we, as we do these improvements. And, and we also, many of our unstaffed sites and our staff sites have volunteer trail patrollers that monitor our trails and report back to our staff if there are, you know, incidences or anything that they're seeing. So we will, you know, be forming that first Cedar Pond as we increase, you know, again, do the improvements on those trails. We'll, we'll recruit volunteers to help be additional eyes on the property for us, which is a model that we're doing across the state and has, has worked really well for staff, you know, for properties that we don't have buildings and infrastructure based on.
Thank you. There's an additional question about how trails will be closed off. Is there any intention to do anything further with the trails that exist now to close them against parallel budding neighbors' backyards?
Amy, do you want to speak to that one too?
Sure, sure. Thanks, Liz. Yeah, so there are a couple, you know, side trails or spur trails that, that we don't maintain and we can continue to block that off and, and, and happy to have a conversation with the individual, you know, landowners along that, along those sections of the trails. You know, we have, you know, we have closed over the last, you know, couple of years now. We have closed off some of the trails to reduce impact on sensitive habitat. And we often do that with leaving vegetation or intentionally moving vegetation so that people don't realize it's a trail. And then without use, it, it grows right in. And so there, you know, yeah, we are, are happy to discuss those situations and those particular kind of spur trails with the, with, with those property owners and close them off.
I really appreciate the comprehensiveness of your answers to this because it's a sensu stricto. This is not a relevant question to the situation in front of the planning board, which is specific to a parking lot. So, but I do appreciate your openness to have a conversation with the neighbors and, and with us about this. And I think the last question you've already answered, which is it's pack in and pack out. There's not going to be trash cans. There's not going to be trucks going in and out to get trash. You know, so really no difference from how it is now. ADA compliance is a part of a more comprehensive plan. In other words, is this, is this a, an initial salvo in a larger plan for the property? I haven't heard anything like that. I don't know if you want to respond to that.
I'm, I'm happy to. I mean, our, like Liz had said at the beginning, and, you know, our, our whole vision is to be able to create safer access for people to enjoy Cedar Pond. It's an incredibly beautiful property and really incredible trail system. And that, that is what this is all about. And, and so our improvements are to create better and safer access for people to enjoy the property. And to do that, that means we need, you know, things that Mass Audubon properties have, which is a trail map, trail marker. So people know where they're going, an orientation panel, a place to park. And so with that, we also are very committed to be able to provide trails for all mobility levels. And on the North Shore, Mass Audubon doesn't have any, or we have very few wheelchair accessible trails. And so Cedar Pond, because of its, the established existing trail is, is flat and level and a loop system. It is ideal for us to be able to create a wheelchair accessible trail. And so we're, you know, have plans to create three quarters of a mile loop on an existing trail that will be wheelchair accessible. And so, you know, we also need a place for those people to be able to park safely and to be able to have a handicapped accessible parking spot. So that's really, you know, really critical. So there isn't a huge phase two or three. We're not planning on building any gigantic nature center. You know, programming will be fairly limited. We really want people to be able to safely enjoy the property and not get lost on the trails. So that, that's, that is what the, the intent with the handicapped accessible trail. It's on an existing trail, just needs improvements to make it wheelchair accessible.
Thank you. And the last question, I don't think is really a question that you can answer, nor can the planning board answer it. I think you could probably answer it in several different ways, which has to do with negative repercussions on adjacent property values. I could see positive repercussions on adjacent property values from improvements to a property which is now not really improved and looks almost vacant. So I, I don't think any of us can really answer that question. It's a, it's, it's a very subjective thing and we're going to have to see what happens. So I appreciate you going through this with us and I appreciate the patience of all the folks on the, on the meeting tonight. I wonder if people have additional, if members of the public have additional things they want to add that are new and different from what we've heard already. You know, certainly aware that people's time is valuable and that you sat on the meeting to listen. I don't think we can vote on this until we have more on the sign and more from the Open Space Committee and possibly more about the stone wall. So we're going to have to send it back to Margaret, I think, to do a little bit of investigating on that, our staff, and work with Mass Audubon and ask that, that you could agree to a continuance until our next meeting for a vote. If, if we can do it then, I don't know if the members of the public want to speak at this point. Please, you know, put up your hand or turn on your camera if you have a comment you'd like to make that we can help you with. Hearing nothing. So how shall we proceed? Does it sound right that we should ask you, Liz and Amy and Charlie, to continue this public hearing to the next time we meet? So that you can present further on the signage and more about the stone wall? Margaret, your take on that would be helpful too.
Yeah, that would be fine. I'm just going to check for the date. It would be the 11th of August is our next meeting date. So in between now and then, if I could get the details for the sign and then the, we have to make a determination about the, the stone wall. And I'll look into it. I'll look at what Master Law, you know, would include as part of a stone wall on a scenic road. And if they do need to have that, we do have time to post for that public hearing for August 11th.
I would just say I will not be at the August 11th hearing. My daughter is having her white coat ceremony at Penn Medical on the 12th and I will be on a flight. And so I will have to miss that hearing, but hopefully Dan. And I will be on a flight. Um, so I will have to miss that hearing, but hopefully, uh, Dan Pascarella can be here to preside.
Congrats, congrats on that, Ann. Wow.
So, um, because we're doing a special permit, we need at least four members. Dan will have to watch this video, I guess, and sign an affidavit. Um, as long as we know David and Peter. And Rick will all be there on the 11th.
I will be.
Pinky swear. Don't pinky swear. Okay. All right, we can make that work then.
There's nowhere else I'd rather be.
Of course. Um, we don't know yet whether we will be in person or on Zoom again, you know, I guess. So, um, we're wait, tomorrow's the deadline uh, for the, the current open meeting law. Um, waivers, so the state hasn't told anyone yet what they're going to do. So, right now. If tomorrow lapses and there's no direction from the state, uh, we have to go back to in person. Um, and if something, we expect something to come up, they'll tell us what to do. And it may be hybrid, it may be in person. But, and the select board are also taking this into consideration at their meeting next week. So, um, I'll work with Charlie, Amy and Liz, um, over the beginning of next week. We'll, I'll make, um, I don't know, Charlie or, or Amy or Liz, if you have any knowledge of, um. Uh, scenic roads and stone walls, you can, you know, we can share that. So, but I'll find out. So next week.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll drill, we'll drill down into that a little bit.
We've um, encountered this in some other, other towns, so I do have some familiarity.
Didn't we just go?
We just went through this at, uh, when Gordon, Gordon College put up the sign, we had the same issue. So. I'm, I'm sure we can figure out how to resolve it. We just have to figure out what the process is, which is, can be involved. Um, terrific. Thank you so much.
Um, so do you want to make a, you'll need to motion to continue to August 11th?
I would move to continue this public hearing, uh, to the next meeting of the planning board on August 11th, 2022. At 7:00 PM.
Peter Clay seconds.
All in favor, weak says I.
Clay says I.
Woodland.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
All right, for us, have it. Um, thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Hey. Pull the agenda back up. I think this is electronic signatures. Uh, which would be so helpful. And Catherine Tinsley has her hand up.
I do. I'm sorry, I'm a little late on this, but your motion to continue should include the, um, date, time and place. Where Margaret's not certain, I think you should amend your motion to at least say in person at town hall or on Zoom.
No, I don't think we have to do that, Catherine.
No?
No, we don't have to do that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, because it'll be posted on the agenda when the time comes.
Okay.
We don't have.
Great. Well, the next item on the agenda is a, a discussion and vote on acceptance of electronic signatures. Margaret, do you want to kick this one off? I know for me it would be enormously helpful.
Yeah, so we've, um, we didn't really do this when, um, COVID first hit, many, many boards and committees did. We, we do have the ability to do it. We've got the uh, software that we need to have you sign things electronically. We just need to, um, have you vote to accept electronic signatures. So I'm just going to bring up the, uh, the motion for that. And let me just see.
Do you want to speak too about? Is this for all applications or only some? Is it?
Yeah.
You know, how would it be applied? Can you just talk us through that a little bit?
Yeah, for sure. It's, um, it's for all of your decisions. Um, that you do, if like, uh, it, it wouldn't be for a Mylar, um, you wouldn't be able to sign an A and R. Um, an A and R plan or anything with it, but, um, you could sign your.
Could you do it's, could you explain what Mylar and A and R is for someone who's new?
Oh, yes.
Ask you to do that.
The Mylar are the big, uh, plastic sheets when you approve, um, and, and A and R is an approval not required plan. That you usually have to, um, endorse. So the.
Paper, not plastic.
Yeah, yeah, well, that, when we all, but we always get the Mylar, um, A and R too. So. You have to come in and sign those. But when you have a decision, um, any decision of the planning board, um, the special permit. Whatever decision you agree on, I could send that to you electronically and you can just go through, there's a couple little steps to go through to get to that. Um, and you can sign electronically and then the registry will accept that. Um, if you could just give me one minute, I have to find the document. I just had it up and now I, I can't.
I just know, even with COVID and working at home, my, my days get so packed that by the time I look up, you know, it's Friday and it's one o'clock. And that, this happened to me last week.
Yeah.
Friday, one o'clock, oh, there's no one in town hall or Monday, whatever, it's no one in town hall.
I know.
I'm stacked up and can't, I can't get over there. And it's like five minutes from my house and I still can't get there.
Yeah, and so.
Everyone, for me, this would be super. It's trying to open it. I don't know why it's not opening. Here comes.
Looks like, looks like David just chased him out of the room.
I know.
You're enjoying your, we're enjoying your zoom bomber.
He's adorable.
We enjoy your zoom bombers.
We do.
They were going to put papers into paper shredders. And the last thing I need is some type of medical emergency. Recorded on camera, so let's.
Frontal negligence with the paper shredder.
Can you, can you see this document, certificate of vote authorizing signatures? Okay, so where it says motion, uh, that, that is actually the motion that you need to make. Set for this section. Um, so if, if someone wants to make that motion, again, this just gives this planning board the ability to sign things electronically. And they'll be accepted by the registry of deeds.
I'm more than happy to do this. I use uh, electronic sign all the time.
Are you making the motion, Peter?
Sure.
Okay.
Unless you feel like you should.
No, no, I'm planning to second it though.
The planning board hereby recognizes and accepts the provisions of MGL.
Chapter.
Chapter 110G.
One 10G.
One 10G regarding electronic signatures and that its members will henceforth execute documents. Either with electronic, electronic signatures or with wet ink signatures. And that both will carry the same legal weight and effect.
I second the motion. And weak seconds. Uh, weak says I, Clay.
Clay says I.
Anderson.
I.
Pascarella, Nana here, Woodland.
Hi.
Thank you. Margaret.
Did, did you, did David vote?
He did.
Did, okay, great. Great. Okay, so that's terrific.
Catherine has her hand up. Is that a remnant or is it new?
I think, no, I think it was just.
It was old, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Oh, no, no problem. I just want to make sure we didn't miss something, which we do sometimes. Uh, okay, then master plan process. I know my land use, uh. Focus group was rescheduled till next week, so I can report on that.
Yeah.
So, I'm really sorry that I missed the kickoff, but I was in the Rocky Mountains, so.
Just, um, just a quick update. So the, the focus groups have started. Um, the consultants are getting, you know, they're really, they're really getting on this. I mean, they're, they're working quickly and asking us for a lot of information, which we're trying to get to them, um. You know, within the next week or so, uh, we do have a, um, a, a little thing that we're going to send out via social media. And try to get that out to ask people to send in, um, some ideas for naming it. And for, to send pictures. So we're kind of going to have a little, um, kickoff blast, I guess you would call it. Where we're doing this social media thing. I've got some people helping me, so we're not going to rely on me for the. Figure out how to do a Twitter or, you know, a tweet, whatever. Um, so we hopefully next week. That will be the first thing that gets out there. I'll send it to everybody so that you can share it with everyone that you know too. Um, uh, the master plan advisory committee will certainly be asked to, um, send it to everybody. Uh, that's the way that we want to reach as many people as we can. So we're, we're, um, you know, we're looking for suggestions too for. Venues that you know of to send it out, like if you all have your own Facebook page or, um. You know, if you send tweets or, or Instagram, whatever things you do, to just reinforce this to get it out to more people.
Um, if you can send them to us, I think that we can.
I will.
I can commit to it.
Yep.
I, I wanted to just report back that I heard from several people that they, um, attended the, the, through kickoff meeting, I think it was. And that they were really so impressed with the consultant, I'll just show that. And I'm also ask, going to ask if, um, I know my little focus group only had a couple of people in it. Are you getting interest in this? And is there?
Yeah.
Should we be doing more about promoting this kind of thing?
I think what, what I need to do is, is let people know that this is real and important. Um, that, uh, even some staff and some, you know, people that I've reached out to are kind of like, yeah, you know, I guess like, I don't know, I guess I can. But I think me saying, oh, this is really something that we're doing, you know, we want to make sure you're involved. Um, and I think that's starting to catch on. The town administrator is, is backing us up and saying, yeah, you know. Make sure you are involved in the, um, in these groups. Or, um, they're also starting to do interviews with department heads. Um, they're going to start those, so, um, each of the departments has, will be notified of that. Um, I also talked today to the economic, um, and financial study people. That are, the people that are going to do the economic and financial part of it. And given them some names, we're looking for any business people in town. Uh, you know, so if you guys have any thoughts about who should get these, uh, requests. And this is, this is not a focus group, this is the consultant reaching out to them individually. They're sending some, um, you know, questionnaires and then they're going to sit and talk with them and get their input. Um, so just some of the business people that I have in, in my mind are, um, uh, the, um. Maria Lacacos, she owns a couple of the businesses in downtown. Um, I don't know who owns the building next to them. Um, she has like grassy roots, oh, what used to be grassy roots and, um, the, the bagel shop, the, the spa. She has that spa and salon and the store there.
Margaret.
I think the person who runs the, the, the kitchen at the tea house now is also, uh, really engageable. Uh, he and his wife, I think are running that now.
Okay.
Um, so, so I think that, you know, our advisory committee, I think, I think that's what we're calling it. Um, there are a lot, there are a lot of people on that that are totally wired. So, like I think about Deb Evans, I mean, she knows everything.
Yeah, I, I actually sent, sent them her name, um, as, because they were asking for some realtors. They're asking for some business people, um.
But I'm talking about the, the part about getting people interested in, in playing. I mean, there's the wonderful town of Wenham, uh, Facebook page, which is great.
We'll get on that for sure.
Yeah, bring all those people in the room. It's just say, you know.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, planning on that. I'm trying to find some of the people, some of the, you know, the not the usual suspects. The people that we don't know of so much, um.
Right.
Businesses up and down, I don't, you know.
But I think if we, if we got the advisory board to do some of this outreach, it would help. I, I don't think it should all be you and the consultant doing it. I think.
Yep.
That's part of the advisory board is, you know, let's get involved, let's, let's, let's move this out there. And I know Rick said he was on a, um, a housing, uh, folks group, so I'm sort of curious to hear about that too.
Yeah, Margaret was there for a good part of it. Uh, I, I think Margaret, one thing is, let, what? A couple of people I know couldn't make it to the housing meeting tonight and they were unaware they had a feedback mechanism to get their thoughts to them. So, I know it's true that you, the consultant will send you a form to fill out with your thoughts on that topic area. So if we can keep reinforcing that, it's another way to get data for the consultants.
Okay.
If people can't make it to a meeting, um, the other, the other concern that some people had to me about summer meetings is that everybody's away. Uh, that can we just push it out a little bit? And I said, well, I know there's a lot more going to be happening in the fall, so stay tuned. Uh, that's kind of how I position.
Yeah, if we hadn't pushed that so far already, gosh.
As absolutely, absolutely.
No, no, I hear you. I, I, I.
Uh, but I, I thought it was a great meeting. I thought the consultant was pretty junior, but, uh, she could have moved the meeting along a little faster, I thought. But that's just me having run meetings like that a lot on Zoom, so, um, I thought it was very good. She was very open. I thought the conversation was great. I did mention that we kind of did have a stilted view of the audience. We were, um. There were, there were no, there were views from like people who were really involved with housing. But it was all very similar. It was all, we need more housing, big A, little A, affordable housing, we need seniors or all that kind of stuff. But we didn't hear any conflicting views that would be different from that. Uh, and I don't know how to reach those people because they're out there. And how do we get a balanced view? So we don't have this, it, listen, housing, that's all I was exposed to. Um, this very progressive ideal that then doesn't match where the town is, right? But we can't balance it somehow. So that was my only concern.
Thanks for that report.
Yeah, so that's, that's about it. Uh, we're moving forward and we're, you know, we'll keep you all, um, in communication. The, the next master plan advisory committee is the 27th of July, so a couple of weeks away. And.
And you'll write little emails to us and say.
Yeah.
Don't forget.
I know, I did want to, I did want to ask, are you going to say, you know, this person and this person will be there at each meeting? Or you, how are you going to work that so that you only get two?
I got a, I got a view that, um, says that we can all go to any meeting we want. We just have to listen and participate, you know, participate in that moment, but not as a planning board member. So, um, I, I felt better about being able to attend as many as I could and not feel like we have to post a public meeting. And we have to, you know, make it also official. So, if we could get that more clearly known, so we feel more comfortable just showing up.
Yeah, and, and, and just if you could just notice us and just say, I, I know it's another thing to ask you to do, but. Reminder, you know, master plan meeting on the 27th.
I will, absolutely, because I'll be sending them out to the advisory committee. And then I'll also just include the planning board on that, on all my emails to them.
And, and we can say, you know, we're just listening in because we're, you know, interested in the process, we're not participating in the meeting, we're just monitoring. And I think if we do that, we should be okay. If you feel uncomfortable about that and want to check with town council, you know.
Right. One question came up today though, was whether you have to be appointed to that committee. Whether all the planning board members should be appointed to it.
For not participating?
Yeah, so you're not going to be voting members when that, when that committee meets.
Right.
All right, even though the charge is that two planning board members will rotate and sit on that committee. So I'm wondering if.
Well, I certainly don't have an answer for you.
Do you, do you think that when you're on the committee, sitting on that committee, like Rick, Dave, Peter, do, would, do you want to be able to vote? On what they're doing that night?
Not me, because I want them to do their own thing. I don't.
Yeah, I want them to.
I don't want, I just want to know when it gets to me. I watched the process, so I felt it was fair and open. And if I had questions or concerns, I would bring it to this group, not to that group, right? Because we're kind of the managing body of that group.
I can't, I can't agree more.
Yeah, I totally think that's right.
All right, that's great. We'll just, we'll, we'll let it be that way.
Right, they're advising us, we're not telling them what to do.
True.
If, but if they felt like we were influencing their conversation, then we need to be spoken to. So that we're not influencing them unduly, right?
Sure.
Right.
And that, that would be the consultant's responsibility, I would think.
With Margaret, yep.
And maybe the town manager, I don't know, but.
Right, right.
Good. Good. Okay, can we move to the meeting, meeting minutes, which I have to say, when I opened the Google Doc link, all I saw was open space and rec meeting.
Okay.
So. My end or your end, I don't know.
No, there's definitely a glitch there. So I talked to Catherine. Next Wednesday, I'm going to meet with Kate and, uh, we'll, I'll talk to Catherine. And I'm going to figure this out so that you are getting the correct link to the planning board minutes. Um, so next Wednesday, so if you, we'll just put them on hold until then. so that you are getting the correct link to the planning board minutes. Um, so next Wednesday, so if you, we'll just put them on hold until then, till the next meeting. So by by, uh, next Wednesday, you should have all of the minutes that you need to review in Google Docs with instructions on how to do it and the correct links. If that's okay.
Yes, that works for me.
Okay.
Um.
We'll get there.
Last item in the agenda is other matters, as may not have been recently or reasonably anticipated by the chair. And nothing recently has been anticipated by the chair because she's on vacation, but, um, I don't know if other people have matters.
One thing I thought might be good is as being a new member, um, as being a new member of of the group. Um, I wonder if we could meet in person sometimes because what I'm missing from other committees I've been on in town is I'm missing the non-formal interaction between us all that happens before and after a meeting. Like we could talk about your kids and you talk about your house and back to me builds a little camaraderie and team. And I think Zoom can kind of take that away from us, so.
Couldn't agree more.
That's all.
So, Rick, more than happy, I'll, I'll email you, more than happy to grab a cup of coffee at, uh, Dunk's and go.
Yeah, no, or even as the group, even as the group, because there's a group dynamic that changes individually, right? We can do both. I'll do both. It's fine. It's all good, but, um.
Yes, I think it, I, we would love to meet in person. I really would, although August isn't gonna work for me, but, um, uh, yeah, I I miss touching the paper maps, honestly. I like to turn leaves and write on a map and.
So, uh, Peter, I think the select board has on their agenda next week to discuss this because we'll know tomorrow what the state, well, we won't know tomorrow, but we'll know that it expires tomorrow. So oh, uh, per in-person meetings are gonna be a thing. Uh, I think it's the select board just giving us that clear, all clear to commit back in the building. So.
Okay.
Gonna be up to you guys.
Have fun, Peter, with that one.
I I've heard there's no way they're, they're letting us go back in person till March.
Uh, the, the state already allows people to meet in person. Many boards and committees are doing it everywhere. I, I, you know, in other communities. But there's a.
Mrs. Ting.
Thing is, yeah, they're, they, they say you, but the, the, the thing is you can use Zoom. Prior, uh, after tomorrow, you can't use Zoom anymore unless they they decide that you can. So as of tomorrow, you're not allowed to use Zoom anymore unless they come in and change it. So that's why we have a gap between, uh, tomorrow and our meetings that we're having next week. We've been told, don't post anything yet until we know what you can do. Because right, once this order is lifted, which it expires tomorrow, you can't use Zoom anymore.
Oh.
That's what the state, but the state is gonna come back and say, now you can do hybrid or Zoom or in person. We think that's what they're gonna say.
Hybrid is the answer.
I just noticed that this Zoom ability has increased community engagement way more than anybody ever thought. And if 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 that's not being the door that's being beaten down to get.
Yeah, I mean, it it it's, it's a, it cuts both ways because as you said, human interaction is very important. On the other hand, it really does increase people's ability to be.
Yeah, it's easier to get to the meeting for sure.
Well, can you just keep us, keep, just shoot us an email. Let us know what happened.
I will. I'll absolutely let you know. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Something will come down over the next couple of days.
Great. I wonder if, um, if we have anything else for tonight, if someone wants to make a motion to close this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the, uh, let's say the 15th.
14th.
The July 14th, I know, right? July 14th, meeting of the planning board and adjourn, uh, to our next meeting, which is August 11?
11th at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Either on Zoom or at town hall or.
Format unknown.
We don't know. Um, I will second the motion, uh, and I will begin the roll by saying, uh, Week says I.
Clay says I.
Anderson.
I.
Woodland.
I.
Alons, alons of fun.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Peter, I get up early, so we can go for coffee some morning.
Bye, guys.